All right, I'm going to call this city council regular meeting Thursday, April tenth, twenty twenty five to order. Why don't we stand for the bunch of reasons? All right, well, the bonds, uh, you know, start over there with counselor player.
Ward.
Thank you, Ward.
Adam Dan.
Nicole Harden.
Paul Miller.
Elaine. Elaine Armstrong.
All right, we're all accounted for. I think there was an error on the agenda for a moment of silence, where fallen firefighter. So we will not be doing that. We'll move on to item number five, changes to the agenda. Are there any changes? Also, Ward.
First, I'd like to move that we remove items seventy two and seventy three from the consent agenda. Those are minutes for January thirtieth, twenty twenty five, and March thirteenth, twenty twenty five. And those were already removed from the packet, but by including it on the consent agenda. You pass the consent agenda, we're technically approving those minutes. I mean, we're.
All right. Want to make motion for that? Oh, that was okay.
Second.
All right, a motion been made to remove item seven eight two and seventy three from the consent agenda, and Counselor Miller seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're getting opposed. I didn't even talk to Armstrong, so.
Aye.
Okay.
My second. My second motion is to remove item number eleven from the agenda.
Okay. For a second.
My thinking there is. It's important for us to consider those, but we should be considering it in context with other information we haven't got. So it's kind of premature, and it didn't make sense to me to consider every piece of information about the properties it comes out. Take them as an package before making a decision.
I'll second that one.
Okay, motion has been made by Counselor Ward to remove. Uh, item eleven from the agenda and seconded by Counselor Hand. All those are put their logs in his gut then. Counselor Harden.
Um, well, I have some information about scheduling an inspection for it. Mayor said that it had, as far as she knew, nothing had been scheduled for that. So with her approval, I made some calls today, um, that I was going to present that. I was planning on presenting that when we talked about the eighth street.
Just, yeah.
Yeah, that was the only thing that I was gonna, yeah, we got to that.
Um, it has been scheduled, and we have talked with the building inspector.
Oh, okay. I, yeah, sure.
Yeah, I just noticed that only, I think, eleven people participated in the survey. So maybe we should keep it going and advertise it a little more, and maybe by the time we get to the point, we have a few more to discuss.
Yeah, no, I agree. There was, I think, like ten, and I was the only person that it might. Well, yeah, it's one person.
That gets down to less.
Mayor, and yes, I would like to keep it on so I could have the update, because I was going to ask about where we were for the inspection. So unless we can put that somewhere else, do we need to keep number eleven to discuss it? Or get an update?
I, I don't think it would hurt to just briefly touch on where we're at on the Eighth Street property on item eleven. And just kind of get a little update on it, but we can go ahead and leave it up to a vote.
I'd like to withdraw my motion. I was only hoping to make the meeting a little proficient.
Okay. Okay. All right. Any other changes to the agenda?
May I offer, it, there is a first and a second, and technically it needs a vote.
Oh, okay. All right, we'll take this motion to a vote then. All right, and the motion was to remove the item number eleven, the Eighth Street property from the agenda. Repressure. All right, all those in favor of removing item number eleven, say aye. All right, all opposed?
Aye.
All right. All right, we'll move on to item number six to approve the agenda with. Items seven, eight, two, and seventy three removed.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda with items seven, eight, two, and three.
Counselor Miller has made a motion to approve the agenda with item seventy two and three removed, and Counselor Harden has seconded. Uh, any discussion? All right, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
She voted aye.
She said aye, okay, great. Agenda is approved. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda, item seven, which now just contains the minutes for March twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. And the financial reports, the budget tax.
Mayor, I would like to have them each voted on separately, or so we could discuss them.
Um, I think we would have to remove that from the consent agenda since it's.
Yes.
Okay, so are what, you're just, uh, are you making a motion to just separate them or pull one out?
Pull both out. I'd like to pull both out so we can discuss. I have questions.
Okay. Without a motion? Okay. Okay. All right. Go ahead and discuss. Seven A, then. Seven A, I, one, March twenty sixth minute. And then the last.
I just, I just have a question. Why are we approving something that's thirteen months ago? What, what, I thought they were approved back then, were they not?
So, Ward?
Different, but similar question, which is why are we considering minutes of the budget? And to the packet or through the budget committee?
Yes.
We're wondering if this is the appropriate place.
Would you like me?
Yeah.
So in unwinding some of where are all of the documents, I did find that those were not approved. And that budget committee no longer exists. Who else would be approving them to then keep record for the audit? There isn't anybody else to approve them.
But you may, it's not currently meeting, but it has, it has a membership, and many of them have multi different terms. So. I just.
And also, I'm pulling this back from thirteen months ago, out of our memories, but this is under Rick. And these minutes came to us, and there was a point where there was some sort of change. And somehow I was voted as the guy that was gonna. Appetite in direction of fund a budget committee. So I feel like I already saw this, you know, gave my budget committee approval to it. Back then, I mean, it might not have got documented, but I think as a budget committee, we have heard the signal once. A year ago.
But there's no record.
There's no, there's no record, there's no signed copy, and we need it for the budget book.
Okay, um, so since I, I understand what you're saying, Counselor Ward, it'd be the same as approving minutes from. In November with the new council, you know, if there's still members currently seated, and they can approve those minutes.
So even the Roberts rule states that even though you don't, you were not present, you don't have to abstain from minutes of the board. So you can still approve minutes even though you were absent or weren't seated.
Perfect, so then the budget committee could be approving these minutes in.
If you would like to wait until then to approve them.
Arm free week.
The March of twenty four, we're in the current audit. Yes, we're in the current audit.
Is there any reason why we cannot approve them as a council?
You, and most all of you are on the committee.
Four, four. Yeah, another one in the room.
Um, I feel so we can, if it's needed for the audit forward, then we can go ahead and approve them, and then maybe run it by the budget committee. Or again, I mean. I don't think that would be necessary. Yeah. What does the council feel we just felt?
Someone has.
Well, yeah, I mean, okay. I have a motion to approve the minutes for March twenty sixth, twenty twenty four.
I think I'm going to approve the minutes of the budget committee of March twenty sixth.
One second. All right, motion fails. All right. We'll move on to item seven.
Excuse me, Mayor, there's the, uh, the financial budget. The budget to actual.
That's what I was just getting to.
I am so sorry, I can't, I can't tell.
Sorry, can you hear me? I don't want to be too loud. Okay, we're moving on to item seventeen, the budget to actual.
Okay, is, I have a question, is that supposed to be through March twenty twenty four, the one we received?
I think it's March twenty twenty five.
I'm sorry, I'm so, okay, is the profit and loss budget versus actual we received in our packet from July twenty fourth through March? Is it through the end of March twenty twenty five?
Yes.
Because there's a lot of discrepancies or questions I have about it. The main thing is, like, on Fund Seven, it says monthly sewer revenue. That did not change a dollar from now, and the one you gave us on March sixth. Did we not receive any sewer payments the last two weeks in March, last three weeks? There's also.
Here, why don't we let her answer one question at a time?
Yes.
The CPA still has not entered those receipts in. Um, she did issue a letter to the council apologizing, just letting her, you know, where she was at with tax season, and the tax season is almost done, so. Um, we're just trying to get through tax season.
If I may speak on this, Counselor Armstrong, uh, me, Krista, Krista put me in touch with the CPA. Yeah, and Krista had pointed out that there is quite a few errors in our budget to actual. And other people have noticed that as well, and so we're planning to get together with the CPA to see about just. Kind of, uh, doing a huge cleanup of our, our budget, and it's going to be a problem with our audit. So we're trying to, once the CPA gets through the tax season, that'll be a, a priority number one, I think. Get that cleaned up, so we have accurate, accurate numbers every month. Just wanted to let you know that information.
Okay, so then we should not be approving this budget to actual? Because it's not correct?
It is the most current version that we have. It's the most accurate version that we have right now, and next month that will change. You can do another budget to actual for the March, and I think it will reflect the sewer payments and other things. You can run the report through June if you wanted to, and you would still have the same information.
Okay, I, um, and like I says, I apologize if I speak over anybody, because it's hard to tell and see. But on Fund Five, the revenue went down. And to March fifth, sixth, you had total. Ex, month, yeah, um, income to be fifty seven thousand some odd, and then the one we received today is fifty thousand. I, I don't understand how revenue would go down once it's been reported. So I think there might be. Errors in this.
Yeah, it's kind of what, what we were noticing. And that's why we are setting up something with the CPA, it's probably going to. Cost money, and so it will need to come to the council for approval, depending on what she has to say about it.
So I, I don't know if you guys are understanding that having a lift taking from what one person's brain was doing and. Trying to understand that in financials, and that's kind of what happened. It's like getting into somebody else's computer on top of the fact that it's tax season. So, um, she's taking a desktop version, trying to figure out what has been done. Some of those reports were done not in QuickBooks, the, the information was exported to Excel, and then reports were created. We don't have those reports, and on top of that, the information is being uploaded into the online version, so we have access. So it is a huge upgrade. It just is going to take a minute for the upgrade.
Is there a requirement that we approve these, what we've given are inaccurate stuff?
There isn't a requirement, but I think it's good for you to have them again. They're not looking like the same reports I did give the CPA. The form that you guys, the format you are used to, and she is aware of that, again, getting through taxes, and we'll get back to, um, some sort of normal format. But you don't have to approve them, but I want you to have them.
I understand having them. Seems to me that if there's no downside, we should just wait until accurate.
Yeah.
Great. All right, so can we take this to, uh? Vote to, or we need a motion first, run a motion? To.
I move that we do not accept the financial budget to actual. Of through March twenty twenty five.
Right, it's been moved by Counselor Armstrong to not accept the budget to actual, and seconded by Counselor Plinter. Any discussion? All right, move to a vote. All those in favor of not accepting the budget to actual, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Right? All right, we'll move on to item number eight, staff reports. This is, we're just informational. Um. One thing I did want to talk about is that the library has been doing a staff report, and Counselor Harden has been on a hard time making the library meetings. So would you guys be okay with making the? Where is it? The library board, item number thirty, that report out, and just having it under staff reports like Krista set it up? So.
Yeah, may I? They, they only meet every two months.
Oh, okay, well.
And I think it's important that you stay engaged, but being that they're under the city, their financials, their codes and things like that, but that is my opinion.
I was, uh, Counselor Harden let me know that it's been challenged to get to the library board meetings. And now that they're putting a staff report in our package. Um, I didn't know if we needed to have her go into the. But it, I mean.
If needed, I think, I guess I just haven't been up to date with where the meetings are and stuff. So if I need to, then I will, but I just figured since they were doing monthly staff reports, you know, didn't know if it was necessary.
I only found out myself last month.
Okay.
It, there's, um, squarely.
During the summer, I'm there all the time, but that's all right.
Okay. I need to start getting on the staff report.
I, I do, I'm, I have a question on the utility ones. It says cleaned up accounts twenty to thirty were turned off for printing statements. I, I didn't understand, we didn't, what does that mean?
There were many accounts that were not being charged when they should have been being charged. They were turned off and therefore not printing statements. Um. And then the setting up the late fee as the council had passed prior. And the, um, collections, I do believe. She quoted about forty nine thousand dollars that had not been being collected.
So those twenty to thirty accounts that somehow they weren't being printed statements? So statements have gone out and we're seeing where we're at on them? Or were they all turned over to collection?
They, no, these are not ones that were turned over to collections. It might be somebody moved, but then there was no updated information on. The person coming in or the, the accounts were just turned off. So she's working really hard to audit all of the accounts and especially ones that come in for permitting and. Things to make sure that they're on payment plans and, um, going after that roughly forty nine thousand dollars not being collected on, but so it doesn't go to collections.
Oh, okay.
Is it fair to say that then those are active accounts, and it's grown, like they're not?
They should have been active, but they weren't. They, they were, for instance, one home had been there for two years not paying sewer. But they were using, correct.
But they're getting statements.
They are getting statements now, and the ones that, um, the, the one I'm thinking of, um, it is working on a payment plan.
All right, any other discussion on that?
I, I have. I'm sorry, on Pub, um, Public Works, number six, what does it mean, working on the city park to meet the insurance criteria?
There was, uh, our insurance carrier took some pictures of the park, a swing was broke. And the chains were tied in the meantime, uh, or sorry, meanwhile, um, getting the seat and replacing it. And also the, uh, slide, um, they told us was. Uh, it, it's not required that we replace it, but it is a risk, and that also drives up insurance costs. So at some point, I don't know if you guys want to think about a slide. I know they're very costly, and it was a donation, but, um, those things have been fixed. The, sorry, this, the swing portion, not the slide portion, because the sidewalls need to be four inches in height on the side.
Slide is little. Yeah, I don't take my kid there, because it's not for kids.
Yeah, and, and I think they gave the age group, it was six to twelve years.
It's a little.
Any other discussion?
And then just one more about, um, the, are we going to? Um, he wants more camera in the facility, move camera in the facility and light at southeast corner of pavement? Is that something that can just be done, or does the council have to do anything?
So we are upgrading with the IT services, um, um, cameras, and if. Additional cameras are needed, that's going to require additional money, because currently. I think we're going to be maxed out for the cameras. Some of them are going to be recycled and used where appropriate. So for example, um, the ones at the library, there's two cameras where it might make sense to have a fisheye camera. There's two cameras that are out in the breezeway where you don't need two cameras. So he's going to recycle the ones that we can recycle and. Put new ones where needed, so we can mention that, but I do believe that's going to require money. But also CIS does put out grants usually once a year for, uh, security cameras. About fifteen hundred dollars or so, so that would be very helpful when that comes around.
All right.
Okay.
Let's, uh, try to keep moving here, we're only on item number eight, so, um. Can we move on to number nine, the component?
We have two comments, one from Linda Sharon. And I'm sorry, um. Doesn't have the spot for your topic. Can I put your topic down?
I'm going to be talking about, uh, the city. Am I on?
Yep.
Good evening. I'd like to address the issue that the city is looking at regarding replacement of the city recorder manager. The city of Lakeside has been experiencing, experimenting with the position of city reporter manager for over ten years. With six since twenty eighteen. I do believe this experiment has failed. Evidence shows that the running of the city requires three working personnel in the office. If one is a manager, the other two end up with more of the daily, day-to-day business of the city. Lakeside is a small town with a population of eighteen hundred and twenty-four, down almost four percent since twenty twenty. As much as we wish it to grow, the reality is without a tax base, which I feel we are not permitted to go for. We are limited in the services that the city can give. The budget is very tight. To hire an experienced manager would cost way more than we can afford. Changing a city manager every one to two years is not cost effective. If the council would consider a city recorder, as per the charter, the salary would save the city about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. The council should take on more of the responsibilities of oversight, which I have noticed has been sorely lacking. The agenda no longer has approval of bills. This may be in your packet, and you have two counselors sign checks, but the body has not approved or questioned any bills in public. You have no personnel officer to address any issues among the employees. Who approves the monthly salary of employees? These should be the responsibilities of the council. You are the stewards of the city fund. If the city hires the superintendent for the sewer plant, they can oversee the construction of the new plant with the assistance of the engineering firm. We currently have a street supervisor. Should either of these positions be unable to solve an issue in their department, they could go to the city recorder. Should the city reporter or office staff be unable to address concerns, the city recorder would bring it to the city council. I strongly feel you should consider this as you proceed and break the cycle of repeating what has not worked for the past ten years.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
We have Randy Thomas, and what's your topic? Yes.
No, I have.
Oh, oh, okay.
I could say.
It's up to you.
Phone forms based on, can I get it up there?
If, if you would like to comment. You don't have no comment, okay? You don't have no comment, okay. That's all.
All right, let's move on to unfinished business. Number eleven, entry property. We're practicing as a result from the eleven people who answered. Which is a little lax than we thought, we're interested in the topic, but thank you to the eleven people who filled it out. Um, I was not present for the workshop, but it sounded like it went really well. And Christie said the inspection thing's scheduled. Do we have a date or is it?
I will, I will have to check, he was here last Tuesday or Friday and, um, he may have already done it, so. I will have to check.
Wanted to make an answer, they didn't know the survey results. Looks like, I didn't take the survey myself. It looks like it's partially multiple choice and partly open ended items, so. And the, for me, the open ended items are the really interesting ones. They're the ones that, uh, citizens respondents give us ideas that we haven't had ourselves. And the responses from those items are in the surveys on certain topics.
But they're on. Okay, I can give you a summary. And most of them were blank responses.
Okay.
But I can get you, I have a couple of specific, I don't believe there were specific ideas, it was more of the same. I I think there was one negative comment, maybe one other comment and it was, um, not particularly um, interesting or thought provoking, um, ideas.
So we'll, we'll just keep this under unfinished business and hopefully next week we'll have more information to start the inspection goes. Is there any other discussion on that item? I mean, there's a lot to discuss.
Did we, are you planning on another one, so?
Well, now we can maybe get an inspection, yeah. I think what's the budget's kind of priority for the next couple of weeks and then the next regular meeting will have the inspection results, most likely. Hopefully we can move forward at that point and just figure something out. All right. Move on to item number, well, we don't really have much more information, but you're still requesting.
So I put it out for a month, I put it on OAW, sorry, yes, OAWU and League of Oregon Cities. I put it out on Indeed. The persons on Indeed that are responding are what appears to be people maybe fulfilling unemployment obligations. Not people that were actually qualified or certified. And so I feel, um, even though I went back and set parameters for them to, do, are you certified? People from like McDonald's and things are applying, so, um, not qualified. And also the Coos Bay District, Water District is hiring for water treatment as well. I think it's water and sewer, and so you're competing. I don't know where, you know, in the grand scheme of priority, this is for you versus salary. Um, but we need somebody who is certified for the purposes. Having somebody come over once a week doesn't fulfill, or once a month, sorry, to, does not fulfill supervisory issues and that is our main source of revenue.
You remind me again what your request was with the increase?
To a hundred and six.
Well, we have it at sixty.
We started out, the original was forty-eight to fifty-one. And the person that was taking that job was working two to three hours a week, part time, just keeping us certified at that rate, not it was prorated for two to three hours a week at forty-eight. So then when we increased it to, um, the eighty, um, when I had the guys look it over, they already knew that I wasn't gonna get anybody, but I wanted to try and just not sticker shock. But I didn't get any applicants.
Like I understand that we, we have very little money in some of these departments. And maybe to get the ideal person, we might have to pay a hundred and ten something. But I'm not comfortable raising any more salaries until we have a better grasp on our, on our, on our upcoming budget and future in the community, like just throwing money out there that we don't even know where to find out, doesn't seem like something.
Personally, I want to get to the budget, yeah.
Not a position that we'd be funding through the general fund though, right? This is all, they're being out of wastewater.
Correct.
Or do you feel, I mean, do we feel comfortable at almost double on that?
To me, when what you're paying for somebody, one, who straightens out your budget and can, can measure those costs. They can come in and go, you know what, this doesn't make sense, why are we doing it this way? That's not the person sitting here in this office. And that's how it has been, um, maybe it's getting rid of equipment that we don't use, putting that out on surplus, because there's a, you know, so they're.
I understand the value of an experience, I'm not doubting that at all, I'm just saying. You're asking us to raise the salary, how is that, you know, you mentioned that comes out of the wastewater, are we feel good solid there to spend that, to double that salary?
Well, um, I, I know there's errors in this, but looking at the payroll expenses for wastewater. Um, currently we've spent a hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty cents out of the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted. So we're seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy under budgeted payable.
And we're collecting more than we were collecting in revenue. The, I just, just one more thing to add, the stress on the staff with the added duties, it's, it's a lot of pressure right now because, um, the person we're getting ready to honor tonight has really stepped up to the plate in doing the job of two people. And, um, that, that's a lot to ask.
Yeah. Most definitely. Um, so it'd be an increase of twenty-six thousand from the current?
Correct.
If I may say, Mayor, um, if they, I know the job description, I don't know if everybody has seen it. We're, we're a class four plant, right?
No, class three.
Class three.
Okay, because I, I keep being told we're a class four with the new plant will be a four. Okay, so if we raise the rate, the salary, they, they should be salary exempt, is that correct? If they're salary exempt, we can pay them more because that would cut back on overtime and callouts because that would be part of their responsibility. Is that, that's what it used to be.
That's not how it's working now, so they're getting paid for callouts.
Yes. But the new super, and it's not a plant operator, it's a superintendent or foreman, is that correct?
No, they need to be a working member.
Yes. And they'd be salary exempt?
Do you want to speak about it, Buddy?
Here's I've been here, Lee has never done an emergency.
Can you come up to the microphone so they can hear you?
Elaine, Buddy's gonna come speak on what.
Okay.
You have four supervisors out there and none of them would ever do emergencies. You try to call them during emergencies, they would never come. They wouldn't answer the phones, I, I have done emergencies for twelve years and just got a basically standby time for when you get, when you get called out. We used to get, uh, four hours and then it got cut down to two. And then you get time on site, so as soon as like a person gets the phone call, the clock starts. Gets here, do the emergency, identify the emergencies, take care of it, do what needs to be done. It either it's a staff system that failed, some failed at the plant, some failed at the airport. Two lift stations failed, it's, it's always daily process, winters are at work around here. The flooding, high, high flows, we hit, uh, over seven hundred thousand gallons during the last super rainstorm that we had. Which, which is the plant, but I know how to keep the plant into the setup to handle this. But from Art Lewis, Mike Powell, Gary Higgins and Brits of Ottawa, never, ever took the time to do the emergencies, ever, it was always me. I know who to call, I know who to get here, if I need them, developed to get, uh, the plant up operation.
Um, I, I, no matter who it is doing the callouts, they should get paid for that.
And then Brits of Ottawa started the, the callout, he took my, my phone that I have for twelve years and then made it as a rotating between, uh, three guys to do callouts. Which sort of helps me out because, you know, there's, when, when these bad storms kick in, I don't sleep at night. I've had to babysit the plant for twenty-four seven because the plant was down and powered. Well, the worst one was when we had a lightning strike. Where it wiped out the generator at pump two and it took about a year and a half just to be able to get it to running, that's why we're getting a new generator because it's with that, that old, uh, old Chandler was built in nineteen seventy-six.
Yeah.
So that was built in seventy-nine and installed with the original plant, so I gotta, you do the work. We haven't had Lee being proactive except for Art Lewis was the only proactive, uh, uh, plant chief operator we ever had to come in and do lab work. Um, help out, sometimes work on holiday. The other one was just sitting in the office looking through Craigslist and the other one, I don't know. You know?
Thank you.
But yeah, so the room can cause like I got the receipt phone because one of our guys is down for it, so.
Thank you.
Just, that's what we do.
Given what we just learned, are we, is, is the given what we just heard and the questions beforehand, is the current job description and what we're looking for, the help with that, or are we gonna end up, man, I got a hundred grand, it's gonna?
So before the job description went out, I took it to the person Clint who is doing our DMRs right now, who's keeping us certified. Um, he's a class three, uh, he will be taking his class four, but he doesn't live here. Um, and then I took it to Buddy and I took it to all of the other guys down there and asked them to look at it to make sure that that's accurate and what they need and what they're looking for. And so my expectation is that person needs to be, that, that would be like saying you guys hiring a manager just to sit there while everybody else does the work and that's just not okay.
Maybe, at that rate, yeah, yeah.
All right. And it's hard to say that that person would get top dollar, but I think it would help the recruitment.
Forming those, so, and applications process and.
All right, well. There's no more discussion, do I, do I have a motion? Or to? Can we, you know, an increase without an actual something in front of us?
What do you mean?
Like, can we, can we make a motion to do an increase?
Yeah, this is just, I still want to finish business.
Like it's the range that's being requested.
I believe it was a staff report eighty-two, eighty-five to one-ten.
Any more? The old one was what?
The old one was, um, sixteen, five to eighty.
We're just gonna leave on unfinished business. Anyone requesting any further information or anything for the next meeting on that topic, or are we just gonna? Push it along?
So I'd like to make a motion that offer as an increase in salary range for the wastewater treatment plant supervisor to eighty-five to a hundred and ten thousand.
Second.
All right, Councilor Ward has made a motion to increase the salary range for the wastewater treatment plant supervisor to eighty-five to a hundred and ten thousand, and it was signed by Councilor Miller, starting a session?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, thank you, um, would that be salary exempt? So that if they are the working supervisor and they do like Artis has in the past, do everything that they're salary exempt, that's their wage, they don't get overtime?
Salary exempt, but they would still get the same emergency callout, correct? They.
Well, your salary, then that's.
Buddy's salary.
Yeah.
And he gets callout time, so. It's not overtime.
Yeah. The question was overtime, so.
Well.
I don't know, I guess.
It's the callout time.
Yes, callout.
If we have a callout and we're paying the operators we have now and an additional person, it's gonna be handled by one of them, it's gonna cost us the same, whether the supervisor gets it or Buddy gets it or, or, or whatever.
Sa- salary exempt means no, they, that's their salary, they do the job, they do whatever it takes. No, there is no callout, Artis did not get callout.
Be your mistake.
Part.
I believe your, your understanding of what exempt means is not correct.
I- i- is it a misunderstanding of the difference between overtime and this emergency callouts, two different things?
If, if we're expecting somebody to take a phone and them to take a turn and the other guys get their turn off, it would be my understanding that that person, no, like you said, no matter who it is, is getting the, there's always callout time.
And salary is based on more or less forty hours, the callout time is gonna be a issue.
Callout time is the same rate for any employee, correct? Or is it based on their salary?
Is it?
I can answer that question, so, most, most cities, ninety-nine percent of the cities will give you one hour extra added to your daily work time, we get one hour, we get one dollar per hour, so let's say where if I work an eight hour day, I get sixteen dollars for every day for carrying the emergency phone home. Weekends is twenty-four bucks. So we're way cheap compared to how the real world works, on when it comes to carrying the emergency phone. So that's how we get paid, so we get one dollar for every hour, we're not onsite. So like I said, I get sixteen dollars on a, on a Monday through Friday, I get twenty-four dollars on the weekends because I don't work week.
And Buddy was saying.
Get called out.
Buddy was saying that no supervisor has taken a callout, ever.
Ten years I've been here, no.
So I don't think it's.
I had figured it all out myself, that's why I know the plants a lot.
I don't think it's gonna be, uh, huge issue, how can it work?
Just, because I think I understand what you're saying, you're getting paid for being on call, whether you get an emergency call or not.
Correct, that's, that's the callout time, that's.
Right, and then when you go out to service an emergency call, you're not getting paid any extra for that. Right, and then when you go out to service an emergency call, you're not getting paid any extra for that.
Yes, we get two hours automatically for callout time, it used to be four hours.
Okay.
And then dropped down to two thirteen years ago and then you also get time on site now. Foley says you automatically should get four hours for being on that, but. It sort of works out because usually coming in here, sometimes it's just an easy fix, but sometimes you're here like all night. If the hours go out, you're you're babysitting, you're you're every hour you're checking everything, you know.
Thanks for the clear.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is how much you get paid for a callout is based on your salary. If you make more salary, you might make a little more.
No, the the callouts just straight uh.
Same for everybody.
Uh Josh Wyman, uh Curtis, uh Wade, me, all get paid one dollar for every hour. We're at home. So like I said, uh uh so when the guys are making, they they work nine-hour days and then work four hours on the weekend. They only get fifteen dollars on a standard workday and then twenty-four when they're not here. So it's just one dollar equivalents for every.
To hold the phone, but the hours that you actually go out.
Do the work, right, so once a callout, it's automatically two hours and then one hour on site, unless unless you're here for a lot longer.
What's the hourly rate for that?
Whatever overtime is in standard.
Oh.
But usually it's whatever time.
Okay. Got a really good movement here. Is there any other questions?
I- if that is a deal breaker, then to me, they carry, I carry the phone and I carry it all weekend long. And I mean, I don't get no emergency money, so.
Well, everyone is trying to figure out what.
If I.
Sorry.
And and so to me, and I am salary exempt. Um and now that's something different, maybe that's a policy that they bring to you, they talk to you about that. If it needs to be different, to me, they just need to be available all the time. They should be the first point of contact. If something happens, not then Buddy. So we can make it salary exempt, you would carry a phone, you get no extra time. That's what you would like to make it.
Okay, that's gonna make it easier.
I don't know if someone would turn down a job just for that reason though. I think maybe we can, if we put that in there, then. You know, I mean, I don't think someone would turn down the job for that reason.
And and I don't think it's particularly in their job description to carry the phone. It's, I think it's kind of getting in the weeds about things.
I don't think it's gonna happen that out.
All right. So we have a motion on the table to increase the salary range to eighty-five thousand to one hundred and ten thousand. We've discussed it, I'll move it on to uh, all right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed?
Nay.
Right, motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.
All right, item thirteen, rename resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh seven to twenty twenty-four dash oh seven A.
So this was, may I?
Yeah.
The twenty twenty-four dash eleven that Counselor Armstrong asked me to look at, that. I went back and listened to that meeting, I believe it was the first resolution between my predecessor and me. Um the first one is the budget resolution and um I called it. In the packet, twenty twenty-four eleven came to the meeting and it was to be twenty twenty-four seven. Duplicating the same number, so I don't know what your process is for renaming these if. These are a A point one or whatever, but I would like to um name the second one. Not the budget resolution, the second, the one that I did, dash A point one.
I would just like to have that in our packet, let's see it. And then for this, just the renamed resolution, no, make a motion to accept that.
If I would have known that, it would have been in the packet because of. Nobody told me.
What if we had the name, the actual title of the resident?
Sure, can I, can we circle back and I'll pull it up?
Yeah. Come back, so I have number thirteen. All right, we'll move on to new business. Move on to fifteen. All right. Yeah.
Make a motion that we place. First of all, our city manager on. People do, he had administrative leave, and we did. And straight now, and I'm making that motion for. Discussion.
I'll have the discussion outside, ain't it?
Um, okay, wasn't added to the agenda. But, so, all right, a motion's been made by Councilor Player. To place uh our city manager on administrative leave and selected by Councilor Hand. Uh sorry, discussion.
E- excuse me, I mean, I I just want to clarify the motion. Is it with paid administrative leave? Is that what was said?
That's what was said.
I'm sorry, I stated that incorrectly.
Alan, did you have, you were starting to want to start the discussion, was there a reason you thought that was important?
Because of the confusion and the errors and all the things that have been happening, but just to get. A process sort of to clarify things, uh it's it's getting another couple of weeks and. I would like to say I'm putting it over discussion, I want to see what people think about it.
Just I need the city to be functioning in the meantime, um. Yeah, yeah. Just for everyone's record here, the discussion about staff needs to not. Um break any laws, please, eh?
My concern is if we were to do something like that, we have a handful of working days to get a budget document. And I don't know how we get that budget document completed if we made this.
Well, budgets have been done in the past, it gives us.
I'd like to just limit the discussion on this topic and maybe just take it for a vote.
Well, like, vote, vote, there will be discussion.
All right. All right, motion's been made by Counselor Player to place our city manager on. Need administrative leave and it's been seconded by Councilor Hand. Any last discussion? Or both? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
What, stopping the discussion?
Okay, okay. Well, I asked if there's any more discussion. I want to be careful. What is Senate Republican? There's any more discussion? But I mean, I'm not gonna take the ending of the discussion to vote.
I can't just stop it on the whole.
Oh, I'm not stopping it, I'm asking if there's any more discussion. Okay, yes, I'm asking if there's any more discussion. I would just say I would personally just. I'm just there to stop the discussion there, yeah. All right. Any more discussion before we move to a vote? Okay. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye, aye.
It's facing the city manager on need administrative leave. We'll move on to. Honoring Buddy. After that. Something was written up really nice for Buddy, um I'd like to read it. Raymond Buddy McKinley, let me share a little, the city manager wrote this. Let me share a little of what I've learned since coming to Lakeside. Buddy has a big heart, loves his family, honors tradition and is wildly funny. He does things by the book, which I love. In his role as operator for the wastewater plant, questions to, he has risen to every emergency task and even stepped into a supervisory role. When needed, he assists Danny when backup is needed and supports the staff at City Hall. My complaint about living filing cabinets is all the managers have requested them in different places over the years. During storms, he is diligent about the amount of water and our collecting system, he checks lines after trees have come down. We have worked together to get the backup generator and the bid documents for the new plant and the permit certifications. Buddy knows our plant and distribution system like the back of his hand. He adds value to the team and City Hall and deserves the accolades and the merit increases afforded to him. Longevity in wastewater is becoming a challenge, let alone fifteen years. Please help me in recognizing him for his dedication to the profession and to Lakeside. Buddy with the deepest gratitude, thank you for serving the Lakeside community for fifteen years.
Thank you, Buddy.
Thank you.
Got a little.
Well, another fifteen years.
Give you which one you.
Well, don't, yeah, we don't.
So uh twenty-three is my retirement date according to first. I got in this industry because I was one of those recession babies that every six to eight years would have to find a new career. Um I worked at an RV industry for seven years, oh eight, you have everybody, some of you probably still remember the oh eight recession. I was hurt on the job and had an RV crush my right shoulder and I had it by the time I had it repaired. Um I was looking at becoming a drug and alcohol counselor, but the uh. A lot of the the situations sort of led me in a different direction. At the time, there was five operators leaving, only one coming in. We were at twenty-five operators leaving, only one coming in. Right now, that was the last uh. Oh, it, oh, it, A W A and O A W use research that there's just no more operators in this. Um trying to get new operators, trying to get young people, they think it's poo. But it's a very viable, uh I'm a mechanical engineer by trade, so with my autism, I love machines. I can understand them, I can look at them, I know how to repair, it's just what I do. When I got hired, there was only one job on the state listing after I passed my grade one. And it was Little Lakeside. I remember coming in spilling coffee on me with uh Artis Lewis and. And so there was a hundred thirty-five allocations, I was certified operator at the track. So it's been an interesting road, um. I own my own in Reed's Ford, I tried to buy a house here, it's time, just couldn't find with the price, I I found the one in Reed's Ford, so. Um traveling to work, I got pictures of trees down, I got pictures of the fire hydrant with only about. An inch of the top showing, I've had boat into work. Never thought I'd have a job like this. It's 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 a viable job, it's an honest job. Um I've been through four bosses, eleven city managers, and I'm just here to do my job and uh. Uh as that, you know, I'll I'll do it one day at a time until somebody says, don't come here anymore. Or or I retire.
Yeah.
And I'll probably insult my every other support offer retired. I went and took my state uh exam for grade three, missed by nine points, trying to get back in the books, studying. Certain parts of wastewater that I have never been around, like anaerobic digestives and primary clarifiers, I have never worked around one, so. Last time I took a test, there was about twenty questions on thing that I, all this seven acts, accent points of hypnosis of. I can tell you anaerobic digestives, like I I make like slugs there is, um I keep our prices lower than anybody else with bird farms. On our hauling, twenty-four cents. Most places get charged thirty-five to forty cents a gallon. So I've always had a great relationship with our our vendors and other companies, so. I'm I'm glad we're finally getting a generator for um. Uh unit one over here at pump station one, but this town has outgrown itself, big time. You go look at how this plant was built and how the two pump stations were built in seventy-nine. This town has grown a lot and it's always good, we, you know, hell, we might start looking at uh uh boundary growth. Just because we, this town has grown a lot, I think. And the people, there's lovely people here, it just sort of to see the how. Um people like you that are always involved, that's what needs to happen, positive involved solutions. And understand that. We got an old wastewater plant and really needs, we need a new one. So when they talk about the two-point-five, nothing's gonna get cheaper. The MBR that we're trying to get will put out the cleanest water. Guarantee, I I've been around three operators and I've and I've studied all the plants in Japan. Every plant in Japan is an MBR, reason why it puts out the cleanest water, so um, but, yeah.
Um, I got to know you really well, the coffee stand. Um Buddy and I got to talk almost every morning and um. Your, your, the way your brain works is amazing, you're smart in so many places and I appreciate you.
Thanks, thanks, buddy.
Um, I would like to move to take a quick five-minute recess. Uh we will return at. Seven thirteen.
Here in the beach today? No.
Taking up. For the weather turned a little bit warmer.
That's more than it looked nice, I told myself, I said, I'm gonna cruise to the beach.
Wait to get weather change, you can go.
The last two times we went, we got zero keep. Nice to go on the boat, but.
Did you guys see that? There's a thing on the. Winchester, Dan Harbor, two whales run.
Wow.
I never realized that they, work is right.
No, no, the.
Okay.
Up back, I guess.
I think the orchid usually comes there a little bit later.
Orchid's been up there.
They had them recently.
Yeah, not as long ago, I remember seeing some.
I was trying to remember when they would come through the bay.
Get you out. Oh, you.
The.
Over here. We need a sign right in the middle. Are we required to have a someone designated as their.
Try. So we can have a trial as.
Yeah, there's chat here.
So she's love recording it all over there and the recording is here. Love to be a reporter. But not with a player. We're gonna.
I'm not gonna complain about sunshine. The whole reason I moved here. Range about the same number of days a year. I'm sorry, about the same amount of rain here, but it has. It's like. It's we never get a thunderstorm, right?
All humans especially. I didn't mean to be trade. All right. We will. Resume session. Uh, item. Number sixteen, applications for budget committee. We can have. Two. Um, Mr. Randy Thomas and James Edwards. We have three open positions. So. But I would love me to. Are we gonna? Interview, should interview like we, we interviewed the other people, so.
So that wasn't really.
Yeah.
Still was, that was. A long process. Change hall before the meetings, they couldn't be here. I just fucking couldn't fit.
Okay. I think we can just go ahead and take a motion to approve.
All right, I'll move that Randy Thomas be included in this year's budget committee.
I have a motion made by councillor Hand and seconded. A motion made to approve Randy Thomas to the budget committee and seconded by councillor Pointer to approve Randy Thomas to the budget committee. Any discussion? All right, can we get to the vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Welcome to the budget committee, Randy. All right.
I'll make a motion to appoint uh, James Edwards to the budget committee.
I have a motion made by councillor Miller to appoint James Edwards to the budget committee and seconded by councillor Pointer. Uh, any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right. Welcome, James Edwards, the budget committee. We still have one open position. And one.
Mayor. Mayor, I, after watching and having the training with the budget committee with the state secretary, with the state. I, I move that we appoint Sandy Lindell. They said that if you can't. You need to work hard to fill it. And I don't see how we could justify not filling somebody. When we have a vacancy. So I move that we appoint Linda, I mean Sandy Lindell. To the budget committee.
Uh, Sandy, are you, do you still want to be on the budget committee? Is your application still valid?
My application is still valid. Yes.
Yeah. Okay. A motion was made by councillor Armstrong to appoint uh, Sandy Lindell to the budget committee and seconded by councillor Harden. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Welcome, Sandy, to the budget committee.
Thank you.
All right. Um. Point budget officer. Seeing as uh. Usually it's the city manager, we'll need to appoint someone different. If anyone's volunteering. No, I've got the office.
So. It's a large responsibility. And. I wouldn't be. I will recognize myself.
As I will.
Yeah. No. Um. Yeah. He was, yay, not right. Well, thank you. All right. Um, and just refer me, are you, is your last name Dickinson or Cross? Dickinson, okay, there's two Piggies, so I just want to make sure. All right. Do I have a motion? For that?
I move we appoint Peggy Dickinson to be budget officer for this city of Lakeside.
A second. All right, councillor Pointer. Uh, made a motion to appoint Peggy Dickinson as our budget officer and councillor Harden seconded. Is there any discussion?
I don't see anyone else stepping on. And uh. See her. Through. Budget committee application. I can't think of a person in town who might be more qualified.
I was praying you would volunteer, so. Um, all right. Moving to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposeds?
I abstain. I abstain. I just. Why?
I think he was joking. Yeah.
It's just. For appearance.
Yes, yes, they rate. So I have. Six. Five and a. One abstain. All right, motion carries. Thank you, Peggy. Um, all right, approve the budget calendar. Item, we're moving on to item eighteen, approve the budget calendar.
And we run down these dates real quick and. Well, before we do that.
Yeah. Do you want to? Drive along?
Sure, sure. Uh, appoint a budget officer. I believe we just did that on April tenth. Appoint budget committee members. We just did that. We still have, no, we have a full budget committee of fourteen at the moment. Prepare budget. That is our big blank spot. At the moment. Ah, that looks as if on April fourth, we had. A notice for a meeting that's going to happen on April fourteenth. Am I understanding that correctly? Well, I'm done with line number four, Alan. Says. And that's why I want to go over, because I wasn't understood, make sure what that means.
Oh, she's sending it out April fourth to be published for April fourteenth.
Okay.
And that has been done.
Okay, and then uh, number five is public a second notice of budget committee meeting not less than five days before the meeting. So April eleventh. For the. This is not less than, but okay, April eleventh for the twenty-first meeting. And then we have our first budget committee meeting on the twenty-first. It doesn't seem as if we're going to likely have a budget in our hands before that date.
Well, what we need is whatever Krista has done.
Sure, sure. And then on number seven is, looks like it's outlining. Three different dates for potential future meetings. April twenty-eighth, May fifth, and May twelfth. I feel like, you know, last year we were able to do it pretty quickly. This year is probably going to be a lot more challenging, so we should prepare for at least a couple of them dates.
Time where it's.
They, last year they were at six PM. Uh, again, number eight is a public notice. Of a hearing that will happen on May twenty-ninth. We hold that. Budget hearing, uh, that. Okay, so number nine is after the budget committee approves. A budget and sends it to the governing body, which is us. We will have a. Hearing in this council on June eighth. We will choose, hopefully, to be able to approve that budget on June eighth as well, which is number ten. So do we feel like we need to adjust that? I'm gonna have a, a hearing on Sunday, likely.
Should we just move into the ninth? Yeah, it's just. All right.
All right. So that changes, we will have. A. Hearing of this body on the ninth. To discuss, and I guess that means the public will have input at that hearing. Same thing. Hopefully, we can approve it on the ninth. And then eleven and twelve are just submitting those approved documents. To the assessor and county clerk. By June thirtieth.
And you have public hearings with the budget committee also.
That was.
Yeah, maybe four and five.
May twenty-ninth. It was uh, a line eight on this calendar, published notice of budget hearing, five to thirty days before hearing. And then the date we have listed here is May twenty-ninth. So I'm assuming that's when the budget committee hearing will be.
Yeah.
No?
Publish. Notification from hearing.
Okay. Yes, okay.
In one of the. The budget. Committee.
Yes.
Perhaps after the first one, have a, a possible pub, um, public notice. For each one of them, depending on when you vote to a budget committee finishes and accept, you know, both work. Yeah, they have a public hearing before you vote.
Yeah, one of the, one of those.
Yeah.
Announcements from one of those meetings has to invite the public to come and.
Each one. You know, if you haven't finished doing the budget, then you have to have a public.
So as long as we cover that on the agenda, this calendar should be. All right, it sounds as if our, our longtime budget committee chair there approves. So I feel like this is a good calendar.
Can't make them.
As long as, as long as we have a. As long as we have a form of, of the committee, so there are fourteen people, so we need. Seven. And, yeah.
Yeah, you'll be fine.
Okay. You're next.
Well, just going with the opposite to you.
Okay. So with that being said. You made changes to. Nine and ten, changing it to June ninth. With those changes, do I have a motion to approve this calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget calendar. I'll second it.
Great, a motion been made by councillor Miller to approve the budget calendar and seconded by councillor Hand. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right, motion carries. Our adopted budget. Um, okay, we'll move on to item nineteen. So. I was included in on this conversation about this uh. Contract for dispatch services. Apparently. Uh, Lakeside, there's a new police chief in North Bend. Uh, or Coos Bay, sorry. And he's been auditing everything. And Lakeside does not have a contract for dispatch services.
This should have gone to.
Um.
Read the first line.
Alan got it.
Okay, so you need to pull up the email from him because he's. Trying to. It needs to be passed by. Um. Sorry, I was. Someone else was supposed to speak up that, um. Here we go. I was gonna have a uh, meeting with them, but I wanted to wait until after the council meeting to see if that was necessary, but. In this email, he said. He introduced himself. Um, you may or may not be aware that North Coos Dispatch Center began providing dispatch services for the entire county last September twenty twenty-four. Started out with the intentions of only providing those services for a few months until Coos County Sheriff's Office can hire and re-staff their center. Shortly into that process, it was determined that Coos County wasn't going to be able to recover quickly enough and that the two dispatch centers needed to merge under Coos Bay. North Coos Dispatch. Um. I'm now in the process of drafting new contracts for all agencies as we began to prepare our twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Um, I have done my best to keep the costs down. As I completed the contracts, I realized that the city of Lakeside is without a contract for the dispatching of police services to Lakeside. Um, the city of Lakeside hasn't fired a contract, but no police contract. So I think. This is kind of, yeah. Um. I would like to meet with you to discuss the matrix used in every incorporated city. Um, so I told him I wanted to. Talk to councillors and then if there's any questions, meet. Yeah, so um, Krista put this on here, so I'm not sure if this was sent from them or not, but. This is something that. Will be required. There's no. If they answer butts about this. Kind of.
Mayor.
Presented uh, by somebody, either this police chief that sent to the mail or. He presented. Yeah, I'm not sure what we're. We don't have a fire department to, or. And then we don't have police.
But it's for the county, so they're.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dispatch service. It's kind of.
Yeah, it's there. It's being run by Coos Bay Police to cut down costs for. The sheriff's department. Sheriff.
What's he just talking to or.
Yeah.
I can be chuckling last night, said he's got a paper this.
I think it might need to be two separate.
Yeah.
Mayor, and I would say on B where it says the designated department, it names Jeremy Roberts. So he seems to think this is his, not ours.
We'll um, get some more information on this and.
I didn't understand. There are that, that. Change thing.
Yeah, and if uh. You know, it need be, I can see if you can hot haul zoom and explain it to us a little bit better. I know, I mean, uh, the city manager had a phone talk about it, so. Not sure what. Yeah. Yeah. Alright, we'll just table this. Alright. Uh, we'll move on to item twenty. The council wants to take out a loan with the new wastewater treatment plan, approximately, approximately two point five million dollars. I'll let you know when I have talked to the city manager about this topic. Um, we did request one point two million dollars from the right, uh, Senator. Representative. Um. Uh, we're gonna check with him to see what the standing is on that. But we can't guarantee that that's gonna happen, and we need to start thinking about how we're gonna pay for the rest of this plant that we're building. Um, currently. In our pocket, it does, um. The current loan that we have taken out and the interest that will be accrued. It's pretty. It's staggering. Yeah, yeah. One point four million dollars interest, so. Um. She was, uh, Chris was complaining that business organ needs. Since we've gotten the bids out, uh, the accepted bids out, we need to. It's a, it's a long process to start getting the actual numbers of what a loan would look like for us. It's about two months, and we would need to go in front of the board. Or business organ to ask them to help us with that. Um. There's probably some more grants that our city engineer would help us with, but. We need to start considering all of our options. So, uh, Krista did say that if we were to. Move forward in this process, and the one point two million dollars of federal funding comes through, that's great, um, and then we can choose to take a lower amount. But as long as we get the ball rolling on this. So we have a, the, there's also a levy. This is, we're gonna have to pay for this loan somehow. Money's not gonna come out of thin air. Um, our wastewater rates are already high, but we're gonna have to increase them. Even, even more, yeah.
It's sort of under, under current, um. This year's budgeting for wastewater. We've been transferring about a hundred thousand dollars from. Wastewater obligations to, um, the wastewater capital. And that's, that's roughly the amount that we pay for a loan scenario. In the same. So if that, if that money instead of transferring its capital, referring funds, since this is capital. That amount of money was paid off, paid to this loan. It's pretty much doable under the current.
Yes. That's, uh, uh, that was another thing, um, she asked the attorney about our maximum indebtedness that we can even take a loan out for. Because they value that at. So I think like. Three percent, point oh three percent of the city's value, and that's based on your property tax, and so. But we already have a loan out, so what would, I don't even, we need to see if we can even. Take out a two point five million dollar loan. On a city that has no collateral.
So, um, we have this, potentially this one. We have the existing, um, sewer infrastructure loan. We have the loan, Eighth Street property. Do we have any other indebtedness?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, yeah.
The valuation of the city, not current, but from previous tax year. So. Would be pretty easy to look at that and come up with a quick.
Yeah, that'd be a good place to start, um, and these numbers are rough for us, numbers. To get the actual figures largely, need to get a little bit further along in the process.
And I'll, I'll try to get some more information from over and see where we're at.
Yeah. And he's pretty involved with us, and he knows, you know. Lakeside pretty well, so we can always ask for more, um, but it's no guarantees.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just.
I know.
Uh, I mean, we have to get a sort of plan. It is, that's not an option. Uh. Two and a half million dollars is sort of estimated overage right now. Yeah, I see one point three in, in contingency in that plan. Can't count on that, but in a perfect world, we don't spend that contingency, that. You know, reduces the amount needed by some number. And hopefully we can get some sort of grant to help us, you know, if we can get the loan, I don't see where we'd have an option not to.
Just a rough idea. What if we were able to take out a loan amount? For less and then do a levy for some, so we're not paying interest on that amount.
Be great.
Well, yeah, yeah, I know, I'm just trying to find it all, because the interest is just absurd.
So what you might have to do is take a loan in fourth term. And then. Put a levy on a valid measure, ask the citizens, do you want to pay?
It's gonna cost you this much or this much.
Yeah. Kind of get creative. Either way, we're gonna be paying for it, and it's not just, you know, the, I think the citizens need to know that it's gonna be. Coming out of all of our pockets, so. One way or another.
Uh, question, and do we wish to take out a loan? Do we wanna answer that question tonight?
Well, I don't think it's. I think we need to gather some more information first, and she was just trying to.
The real answer would be no, but.
Yeah.
Okay, as long as we, you know.
It's when the pen pad asks you if this price is okay. Yeah, it's, uh, we need to just start a conversation, keep this on unfinished business. Um. Okay. Let's start. Move into the board committee reports. Airports, no one. Watershed, council.
Uh, we've been doing a little lake cleanup, we gathered up a bunch of styrofoam and garbage off the lake. Just east of the. Channel entrance in the south lane, and called that off today, and then still just kind of waiting on whether to start another, what my history.
Thank you.
Water district, Councilor Pointer.
The water district has filled two open positions that we have, because of resignations, and one. That ends up for election, um, they're waiting to see what happens with the election. Doing their best to. Revitalize their plant and, uh, do the upgrade they've been talking about, this, this group of people so much, but, um. Another one that has to be done. Other than that, normal, normal business.
Alright, uh, T L A, and my L A's Association, how's their work?
Yes, the T L A met on, uh, April second, which was also Randy Thomas's birthday. I was not at the meeting. Please, but it's time to update it. It shut off.
We're busy hanging out with Randy on his birthday.
On April twenty sixth. Um, on the continuing theme of lake cleanup. Um, T L A is having its birthday lake cleanup day. So it's April twenty sixth from nine thirty to one. It's gonna be a dumpster at the public dock. County park. And they're encouraging people to come out to the lake and have debris, bring it back to the dumpster. And, um, they're saying lunch will be provided through volunteers. Next meeting is June fourth.
Fire district.
The fire district, uh, met last night, and then, uh. We had the chief's report, uh, so we had, we had a total of forty five calls last month, twenty seven of them on the north side, which. Again, says we need a station over there, so we're still working on that. The seismic reconstruction of the fire hall will start in May, hopefully, and it'll see it's gonna be starting to happen. That'll take about a year and a half. And then it will be much more safe from earthquakes. And the graffiti on the, on the potheouse, uh, the way, uh, the perpetrators were found, and they're going to be repairing the building. Either this week or next week. Well, and that would be. That's all the news.
Yeah.
Alright, so a couple of weeks ago, we had a pretty good meeting at the lodge where we had discussion about what. The community wanted to do for Experience Lakeside and other summer events, but. The most. The closest to us is Experience Lakeside. Since then, there's been quite a bit of planning. Coming together, uh, I think, you know, next week, they're gonna have some stuff we'll be able to put out to the public. Uh. We really encourage anyone in the community who wants to come and be involved and help us pull off a really fun event. You can probably reach out to Patrice at the salon, or. David, who's the president of O B O at the lodge, and, or just hit us up on Facebook or something and. Say, hey, I wanna help, I wanna be involved, I got an idea. Bring those to us, 'cause right now it's, it's the crunch time.
What's the status on that? Don't pink.
Uh, we'll talk about that on the Fourth of July, right?
I have one of them.
I think Fourth of July is when we have the shots and warmer.
Okay. Yeah.
I think, I think you and I are in, in Fourth of July, uh. It's not gonna be cheap, turn over the money towards the fire, the, the, is that the idea?
That's kind of what you were thinking. Okay. Um, okay. And then I'll just go. Yeah, um, so code enforcement have not met. Uh, senior board, Councilor Armstrong.
Yes, the, um, May, this is a reminder that May tenth is the breakfast. They have it every other month. Second Saturday of the month, and the deck is all completed in the. Back of the senior building, and it's been settled from what I understand, everything's taken care of.
Right? Uh, Councilor Harden, library board.
Um, so the library is doing cooking classes for the teens in our area, which is awesome. Um, they had a class on April fourth, and they learned how to make sushi. Uh, they do homework help sessions down there for the teens, and they will be doing, um, composting, hermiculture, gardening, painting, and more coming up next month. Um, in our.
And have our first budget meeting on the twenty first. Are there any other meetings next couple of weeks? I think, no, I'm not allowed to speak, but may I ask for the council's permission to contact the staff? And, um, will it start on the books and everything? Yeah, I think I need to start right away. Yeah. Yeah, I didn't, yeah, I'd like to, I'll get in touch with you too, um, about the C P A and stuff, um. Alright. Let's, okay, so mayor, hold some comments, I'm doing, I'm gonna leave tonight, um. So we don't have a city manager anymore. Um. We. We need to figure out what's gonna keep the city open and running and our bill spate. In the meantime, um. This is a good opportunity for people to step up and help their town and help us, and, you know, we're all volunteers, we all. Do a lot, and, you know, some of us have jobs and lives, and so we just, we just all need to come together and kind of make sure we get through this time, okay? So, um, as a council. Do we need to designate someone as a?
We do need to designate the city recorder, but Tim could sit in the corner. Uh, there's been chair in the past. It would be a possibility. And, and just keep paperwork organized and, and minutes taken for the evening, you know, meeting in the package, so.
Is that something we need to get her input on before we? She may say no.
Need to get her on soon.
That's just what.
Oh, I, I think we should contact.
Yeah, I'll get in touch with her tomorrow, um. As far as, so when she says yes, do we need to get together again to designate her?
It needs to be voted on in the meeting. First, it's your, uh, it's probably shouldn't be seen.
Okay.
She had some kind of family emergency, so I don't know whether she should do that tomorrow or not.
I'm just worried before the next meeting, I mean, we have an agenda that needs to go out for the seventeenth. Um.
Well.
Passwords, emails, uh. ARPA, they have to get on the portal, there's a little, something needs to be figured out tomorrow, so.
If need be, if it's helpful, I can show up here tomorrow morning and. Be whatever this name may be.
I'm free in the morning.
Let's see, mayor, could we? I, I would like, I believe Counselor Pointer said. Because it's hard to hear, it's breaking up, but if we go ahead and. Appoint Pro Sharon to be city recorder pro Tim. Then we're following our charter and. Where she could then do the, record the minutes and that kind of stuff, and if she says no, then we'll have to find something else. But if we make a motion tonight and she says yes, then we don't have to re-meet on that. And I think that we also should make a motion to appoint Michelle to be the ARPA. Rep-designee so that she can start that part of it. I think we need somebody that is detailed oriented. That way we don't have to re-meet. If they're able to go ahead and do it, then you can meet tomorrow and make the plans with everybody.
Is, is she familiar at all with that process, or have any idea? I mean, maybe, we, maybe that's something we should find out. Michelle.
Yeah.
That's why, do we need to make a motion, um, officially to designate an ARPA person and can just, a city staff member, excuse me, fill it out?
I, I'm not sure, but if you follow the treasury guideline, it says that, you know, you designate somebody to be it. And I think it can be done by consensus, but we need to. And then we'd have to give her time to sit and look at the tutorials and the webinars on how to do it and get somebody started on it. Because nobody, yeah, it's, nobody knows how to do it until they sit down and do it.
Do we designate them, and if they say no, they say no?
We can get ahead of it. There we try, I mean, it's that important.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I would move that we appoint Sharon Barker. Recorder pro Tim for the city of Lakeside, and what's the other lady, Michelle?
Foley, I think.
Yes.
Foley, she's first name.
Or Michelle, uh, as the ARPA designated person for the city of Lakeside. And I mean, there.
I'm second. Alright, Counselor Pointer has made a motion to appoint, uh, Sharon Barker as the city manager pro Tim and, uh.
Recorder.
City reporter, sorry, sorry, city recorder pro Tim, and, uh. Michelle as the designated ARPA reporter. Uh, and Counselor, pardon, second, sorry, that was a lot of words there. Um, any discussion?
Pending approval.
Yes.
I understand the intent, the addition of the language pending approval. Assigning things to people without.
I would agree, I, I think a conversation in the morning with them would be appropriate.
Well, the problem with concern is, and then what?
We have an emergency meeting to do that for him.
Then, then we're looking at Tuesday at the earliest, Wednesday at the earliest, then we're meeting Thursday and. An agenda needs to go out, I, I can get that out tomorrow. Bill, like, pay bills, payroll. Arpa.
I didn't talk to Sharon about that.
I asked her if she would be interested in being, uh, interim city manager because people have been. Volunteering her for the position and she did say yes. Um, so there's that.
Well, she does most of the, most of the mechanics of all of that anyway.
She said she would help getting the city along, so she did express that to me.
Have a question then.
Yeah.
If we were to put her in that position, she accepted it. Does that save up? If we were to put her in that position and she accepted it. Would that have the effect of reducing our overall costs for those months? Yeah, we, money's tight, is that good? You know what I mean? Is that physi- fiscally a, a, a good move?
Well, I think we still need to move forward beginning, uh. Interim group, like with the seventeenth, I've had a handful of applicants apply for this interim position. So I still think we should move forward with that, um, at the very least, we need someone.
I don't disagree, I'm prepared to sing it through. Just looking for a band name.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
But until we get someone, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I just wanted to understand.
Mayor, would it, would, would it be practical to see about going through at lists and rehiring? Previous staff we've had here? That could help with making the packets, billing, discount, whatever it would take to get us through until we got something else?
I think for the next week, we will be. Fine with the staff we have now, then we should look at our interim applicants and then if, this is my thoughts. Um, and feel free to put your other, your thoughts in, but. We should look at our applicants and then if we find a good interim manager, we wouldn't need extra staff. I'd hate to bring someone on for two weeks and then tell them to leave, I mean, I guess that's the point of the temp worker, but. It doesn't seem to make any sense, they would just be getting activated to. What's going on, um, I just, for today. We just need someone to keep the, keep the doors open and bills paid.
Well, so Sharon already said that she wouldn't mind doing it. I mean, I guess without having her confirm it tonight, that leaves that hanging, but being still. Our option now.
I think it's what we can do. I'm not too sure about Michelle.
Yeah, I don't know much about her.
I think she's very capable of being able to handle the ARPA things, but it's not technically in her job description, so.
Yeah, I feel like that one's maybe it's a bit less, tad bit less. Priority, meaning that we could have that special with her tomorrow. The other one, the, 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 the temporary city reporter, we need somebody to do this in the morning.
Yeah, it's. Well, we could just limit this to just Sharon and I guess we could make her the ARPA person also.
Oh, well, we had a motion on the table, we can go ahead and just, uh, vote on that or if you'd like to modify the motion and. Break it into two.
Maybe we should break it into two, I would modify my motion to. One motion to, uh, appoint Sharon Barker the interim city reporter.
All right, the motion on the table has been modified to state, uh, we will appoint, uh, Sharon Barker to our. City recorder, city recorder pro temp pending approval and it was seconded by councillor Harden. Any discussion on that? All right, call those in favor, say aye. Most?
No.
I think maybe we don't need the.
I don't think so.
I think we just talk to Sharon and figure it out, yeah, okay. All right. Okay, I think, I think I'm good, we can go on to council comments.
None for me.
I don't really have anything to say.
All right, so. Since our last meeting, I've had several citizens come to me with questions about how our city. Hires a city reporter. I've also seen some fairly inaccurate information going around. So I figured it was time to fulfill one of my goals when I was elected. And at six P M on this coming Monday, the fourteenth, at the Lions Club. I'm gonna host a roundtable conversation, an educational opportunity. Similar to how we used to do city or golf with the mayor or whatever, if, let's just get together and have a conversation. The subject of the evening will be our form of government, mayor, council, staff, how did they get to be in charge? The goal of the night's discussion will be to learn how our city chooses a mayor, council and administrator. This is not a conversation about a particular staff member or staff at all. I want, or we're about to go through, uh, maybe a six month process to hire a city administrator. I would like our citizens to have the opportunity to understand that so that they can support it. If not, it's gonna be a constant. Misinformation constantly going around and I think this is an opportunity. Uh, so anybody in the community that wants to meet with me on Monday at six P M. Let's sit down, let's look at our charter, let's look at our rules, let's all understand this process that we're about to go through.
That is generally true, but what the law says.
If more than three will be there, we will notice it.
Yeah, we may, are there other councillors interested? In, in, in coming and if that's the case, do we just notice it as? And that way we're covering our, our butt and I wasn't sure how many councillors were interested.
Not even if only turns, we're still covered.
Sure. So is that something?
Um, if we have to notice it.
If, and, and also, there you go, we can change the date if it doesn't work. We, it was just, that was a date that came up.
Yeah.
And, and Lions Club was like, we can do that, you know what I mean? If, if, if we as a group think there's a better date, I'm, I'm happy to. Okay, well, we can try to push it if, if we think it's fruitful, I mean, maybe given tonight's. There, we need to have that conversation more than ever.
Yeah, I, but just if we need to notice it, we ample time and tomorrow seems like it's gonna be.
It sounds like Alan's interested, Nikki's interested, so that's gonna put us over for, I say we. Do plug in on noticing it and you let me know. When the earliest date is and we can try to schedule that. Thank you.
Exactly, I'm gonna talk one more time, um. This, you know, this is a, a little bit of a sweep up for the city and now I just want everyone to keep thinking big picture here and. Um, it's easy to get caught up in the little. The, the drama of it all, you know, but there's bigger, bigger things at hand, the wastewater plant, there's. You know, Lakeside has so much potential and I don't wanna stop moving forward in the right direction, so. Yeah, it's a lot of things, thank, thank you for coming.
Well, I didn't have a good time, I didn't like.
Great, well, with that, I will adjourn to next meeting at seven thirty. Oh, gosh, I'm sorry, you're late.
That's okay, um, no, no, I'm, nothing, thank you.
I need to come here in the morning.